Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals. We have a very busy agenda tonight, and a lot of people here that have a lot to say. So I'm going to start with some procedural things. If I could ask everyone just turn their phones down. And if you are going to speak, there is a microphone in the center of the room. I'm going to ask you to step forward and speak into the mic so we can hear you. Our first agenda item. Those of you who's followed the zoning board will recall seeing Mr. Paul George sit to my left typically for 25 years, and we were so pleased to have him. And he has stepped down from the board. So I wanted to thank him for the time that he served us very, very well. He was a great member of our board and had a lot of historical knowledge that we relied upon heavily. So thank you, Paul, for your help on the board. This evening, I'd like to welcome our newest board member, Kevin Nesbit. And Kevin will be sitting in for -- well, he's our new Paul. I'm going to call you Paul. I'm going to try not to. And so that's that. So the first point of business this evening would be to elect a clerk to stand in. I'm looking for a nomination.
Madam Chair, I nominate Peter Mulcahy to be clerk.
And I second that nomination. Peter?
I accept.
You have no choice.
You have to vote, right?
That was easy. I don't think we have to vote. I think we just -- all right. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Next order of business is to review and approve the minutes from the July 27, 2020 meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve July 27, 2020 minutes.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? I don't need to do that, do I?
Aye.
Sorry, we're on Zoom for like 100 years, so we're back in person.
We don't have to do roll call, but we still have to vote.
That's right. Okay. All right. Wonderful. So moved. All right. So let's start with our first public hearing of the evening. And this is a continuation from the June 28, 2021 meeting. This is -- the appellant is 526 Hartford Turnpike, The Point at Hills Farm. It's in the limited industrial Route 20 overlay district, Smart Growth Design LLC. And this is a request for a continuation on a modification to a comprehensive permit granted November 28, 2016 pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 40B, Section 20 to 23 of the Massachusetts General Law to allow for a reduction in the density of units.
Madam Chair, I understand they would like a request for continuance. I make a motion to continue the hearing to our next scheduled meeting, which is?
August 30.
August 30, 2021, at 6:30.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Opposed? Good. All right. Do I need to -- all right. Next on our agenda, another continuation from the June 28 meeting. This is to hear the appeal for two Janet Circle. This is located in the Residence B1 District. Michael Hopkins of 100 Lake Street in Shrewsbury is appealing the decision of the Shrewsbury Town Building Inspector, Section 7, due to traffic, parking, size of structure, and a project not in keeping with the neighborhood. I understand you have counsel here?
Yes.
Please step forward.
Is it possible to use the table and speak from here, or will I need to speak behind the microphone?
No, you're good with the table. We have the microphones right there.
Madam Chair, we'll need to do the Mullins letter before.
Oh, thank you.
The appellant presents.
Thank you, thank you. Our last meeting, we had Mr. Fulen here, and he is not here this evening, so we are going to have to use the Mullins Rule. Mr. Nesbit understands that he has reviewed the information from last session, and so he's going to sit in on this hearing. So I'm going to have him please sign this. Thank you.
The appellant will also need to sign an recognition.
Mr. Hopkins.
We have no objection.
Good. Could I get your signature, please?
Absolutely. May I approach?
Sure.
Yeah, he can sign.
There we go. Yep. Thank you.
May I approach again?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Attorney Sainz.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairperson and members of the zoning board. Thank you for hearing us this evening. As you're aware, that the subject property to this proposed project is to Janet Circle. And what we are looking to do is to have the permit immediately revoked and a stop-work order issued based on the application of the permit itself and the permit that was issued for this proposed project. The property in question is to Janet Circle, and as Madam Chairperson said, it's a B1 residential zoning area within Shrewsbury. The property was purchased by Whitney Street Home Builders on November 18, 2020. Whitney Street Home Builders is a domestic -- excuse me, domestic limited liability company whose primary member is Steve Venencasa. If you look at Exhibit 1 in the binders that were previously provided to the members last week, you'll see the business entity summary from the Corporation Division, which reflects this information. On March 9, 2021, Michael Potasky, who is a licensed construction supervisor, applied for the residential building permit for an all-new construction, one-family home only, on behalf of Whitney Street Home Builders. We've provided a copy of the permit application for your convenience on Exhibit 2. At the time of the application, Mr. Potasky described the work for the permit as, quote, "build 3,300 square foot home with no garage, eight bedrooms, occupancy 14, congregate living facility, non-transient, St. Jane Francis Homes LLC," end quote. Michael Potasky lists the project as a single-story project on the permit application despite the plans being provided as being a two-story building. And again, you can reference that on Exhibit 2 of the packet that was previously submitted. At the time of the application for this permit for this project, St. Jane Francis Homes LLC did not exist whatsoever. So on March 9, when they applied for this permit, St. Jane Francis Homes did not exist in the Secretary of State Corporation's website. On March 19, St. Jane Francis Homes LLC was incorporated in Massachusetts as a domestic limited liability company, primary member being the same owner of the LLC that owns the property, Steven Venencasa. You'll notice on Exhibit 3, which is the St. Jane Francis Homes LLC business entity summary, that the date of incorporation was 3/19/21, and the primary members are Steven Venencasa and James Venencasa. On March 26, the town of Shrewsbury received correspondence from Whitney Street Home Builders describing the proposed use and involvement with St. Jane Francis Homes. You'll find a copy of that letter as Exhibit -- excuse me, Exhibit 4. On April 30, 2021, the residents of Janet Circle, who are here this evening to oppose this project, they received a letter from St. Jane Francis Homes as well, which is attached here as Exhibit 5. And you'll see on the letterhead that the letterhead is incorrect on Exhibit 5. The name is St. Jane Francis Homes, and they have St. James Francis Homes. You'll see on that letter that St. Jane Francis Homes is going to be providing consultation to an incorporation called Educational Homes in order to run a sober facility. This letter, to the best of our knowledge and based on the information provided by the town of Shrewsbury, was never provided to the town until July 14, after this permit appeal had been filed. So to the town's knowledge, at the time of the application, the only organization that was involved with this project was St. Jane Francis Homes, which is a domestic limited liability company that is not a nonprofit organization. Also, what else is noteworthy is that the Educational Homes is not registered in the state of Massachusetts as a doing business as. Later on down the road, when the town received correspondence on July 14 from Tri-Cor Transient Housing, that's when they realized that Tri-Cor Transient Housing and Educational Homes were combined. However, they've made representations to this town, representations to this community, that Educational Homes is what was going to be governing this project, which does not exist within the realm of the Commonwealth. Now, on May 5, 2021, the permit was issued for Mr. Potasky to construct this project. And you'll see a copy of the permit on Exhibit 7. And notably, on the permit itself, it says St. Jane Francis Homes LLC as the organization being involved, and that it's a new single-family residential use. At the time of the issuance of the permit, I would reiterate that no nonprofit corporation to the knowledge of the town was involved with this project. The permit, in our opinion, should be revoked immediately, and a stop-work order should issue. Now, the town will argue two points. One, the proposed sober house is protected by the Dover Amendment, or MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3. And two, that the proposed sober home is protected by the Fair Housing Act. First, the Dover Amendment states specifically that, quote, "no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall regulate or restrict the interior area of a single-family residential building, nor shall any such ordinance or bylaw prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use of land or structures for religious purposes or for educational purposes on land owned or leased by the Commonwealth or any of its agencies, subdivisions, or bodies politic, or by a religious sect or denomination, or by a nonprofit educational corporation." It's our position that this project, based on the representations made by Mr. Potasky on the permit application, that it is not protected by the Dover Amendment, because at the time of the application and at the time of the issuance of the permit, there was no nonprofit organization involved. So the St. Jane Francis Homes LLC is a domestic for-profit corporation, and therefore they're not protected by the Dover Amendment. On the other hand, even if the Dover Amendment were to apply in this case and protect this project, the project itself violates the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw due to the number of proposed persons expected to participate in this residentially-zoned home. The proposed project is in the B1 residential zone. It's for a single-family use. The Shrewsbury zoning bylaw itself defines family as any number of persons related by blood or marriage living in the same dwelling, or not more than five persons unrelated by blood or marriage, living together as a single housekeeping unit. The Dover Amendment provides protections to projects like this proposed use. However, the project still has to conform to the zoning area in which it's fact. So in this case, while the building itself conforms to the zoning bylaws with the frontage requirements and the height, the interior use of the occupancy is not in conformity with the located B1 residential zoning area. So whether or not we apply the Dover Amendment, it does not conform. Further, the town is going to argue that this project is protected by the Fair Housing Act. The Fair Housing Act classifies those who are in recovery from either alcohol or substance use as a disabled person. We don't contest that. We agree that this is a disability, and we agree that this is a protected class. However, while the Fair Housing Act does protect these persons, they don't give them a carte blanche to do what they want in whatever zoning area or in whatever community. So what the Fair Housing Act specifically classifies the sober home as is a residential facility, and it needs to be treated as a residential, single-family home. And that's provided for specifically in the Fair Hearing Act. As such, the sober home -- excuse me, the sober living home would be entitled to the same options and protections as any other members of the community seeking to create a living space that these persons are looking to create. The proposed use lists on the permit application 14 occupants unrelated by blood or marriage. The proposed use is not in accordance with the bylaw. At most, they can have five occupants, because they would be unrelated by blood or marriage. The Fair Housing Act does not provide an advantage to allow anyone seeking to reside a sober home or create a sober home project. That's not the purpose of the Fair Housing Act. If Shrewsbury received an application for 14 roommates looking to live in a single-family home, it would be denied on its face, because 14 people cannot live together in one single-family home. Much like in this situation, we're giving the sober home more authority over the Shrewsbury bylaw to have more occupants, where we would not allow that in a residential home. The Fair Housing Act doesn't eliminate or erase the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw. It simply requires that we don't discriminate against this group of persons and not allow them to live in that community. The position is not that they shouldn't live in the community, it's that they should conform to the bylaws that are at play here. And here, it's five people. The project, as it was issued, where the permit was issued, was issued based on false representations made to the town. It does not conform to the requirements of the Dover Amendment. As it stands today, and based on the permit on its face, the permits' application, the St. Jane Francis Home is not a nonprofit corporation. The Dover Amendment should not apply. And pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 14, this board has the authority to today revoke that permit and order that the work stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Madals, we have you here.
Yes.
As a representative of the town of Shrewsbury. I'd like you, if you could, to address -- I'd like to understand -- so we have an appeal in front of us of the building permit. That's what was brought in front of us.
Correct.
Could you help us dig into that a little bit? And?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you to the chair. And also, a couple preliminary comments. First, I recently had oral surgery, so my speech is a little bit impaired. So I apologize. I'm still recovering. Second, I appreciate the presentation, but the comment that the town would argue one way or advocate for one party is not the interest of the town or not the interest of myself as town council. It's serving the town's interest as a whole in this matter. So we're not taking sides. We're dealing with the facts and the law as applied to this matter for this board's consideration. But you're correct. This was an appeal of the building inspector's decision to issue the building permit. My view, it doesn't concern the use of the property. We haven't gotten there yet. The plans don't reflect a particular use. It's a residential structure and a residential zone. But I know much -- most of the neighbors, their concerns are focused on the use. So following conversations with the chair, we thought it would be helpful if I provided an outline of the legal environment that Council for the Butters has described. So this will be a little bit redundant. But as the board knows, and as residents should know, we have a hierarchy of laws at play here. We've got federal law, state law, and then our local law. And there's a hierarchy there, that federal law trumps state law and local law, and state law, of course, trumps our local law. So we can't impose anything that conflicts with state law or federal law at this level or in our practices, which is relevant as I get to the matter of the Fair Housing Act. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination against persons based on those familiar categories of race, gender, and disability. And the Fair Housing Act was amended in 1988 to include within the definition of disability persons actively seeking sobriety from alcohol and/or drug addiction. So persons seeking sobriety are protected under the federal law, including relative to housing availability. And I have read in research on this that there's a -- the part of the recovery program is to live collectively with others in similar circumstances, that they, as I've read, aid one another by living together, seeking sobriety together. So that apparently is what is the proposal. Massachusetts also, we have a state anti-discrimination statute, which mirrors the federal law. And by mirroring the federal law, it incorporates those definitions of disabled persons. So the proposed residence of this structure of -- that was with the building permit, would be protected under both federal and state law from discriminatory practice in their desire to live in a residential neighborhood. That is, the law imposed on this town and all the towns throughout the Commonwealth, and that is what we have to deal with. Separate from the federal law is, as was mentioned, the Dover Amendment. I think the focus on the Dover Amendment to the chair is a little bit misplaced, because I think the primary focus is on the federal Fair Housing Act as amended. The Dover Amendment, as was stated, and as this board is very familiar with, provides that no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall regulate or restrict the use of land or structures for educational purposes. And there's plenty of Massachusetts case law that holds teaching of life skills for disabled persons is an educational purpose. You may find that hard to grasp, or it's a bit controversial, but that is the state of the law in Massachusetts. So land or structures for educational purposes owned or leased by a nonprofit educational corporation, provided, however, such land or structures are subject to reasonable dimensional controls. And by reasonable, it's been interpreted to mean nothing that would interfere with the protected use. But in this instance, I have not heard, and maybe the board will get into this, that anything about the Dover Amendment has been in play to get the building permit, that the structure is compliant as a residential structure in the zone. But we -- the board can get into that. So just in kind of summary, the Dover Amendment and the provisions of the federal Fair Housing Act trump the occupancy standards or definition of family in our local zoning bylaw because of the supremacy clause, right, of that preemption standard. And I know there's some attorneys on the board, but that we can't impose a local standard that thwarts the state or federal protections. And to do so would be discriminatory. And if the town suffers a claim of -- or has to defend a claim of discriminatory practice, some of what's at stake is if you lose, you have to pay all of the applicant's legal fees and expert costs to accommodate them for their protected use. So that's just a general outline of, you know, it's not the typical, you know, deck over side lot line that we have to deal with. There's a whole environment of federal and state law that protects persons with disabilities and seeking to live in a residential environment.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to open up to the board's comments, if I could.
I have a couple questions, Madam Chair.
Certainly.
So for town council, what about the fact that there doesn't appear to be a registered not-for-profit involved in the permit application process? Because that does -- I know that you're saying that the Dover Amendment seems to be less an issue, but that does appear to be a requirement for its application.
Right. That to the chair, in my mind, goes to the use, right? And so until there's an occupancy, arguably, a family could occupy the structure with eight bedrooms. Until the use is proposed, I don't view it as a violation.
Okay. So that actually leads perfectly into my next question. So if the Dover Amendment's not in play, but we're saying that the Fair Housing Act is, my understanding of the Fair Housing Act is that it prevents discrimination against protected classes. Here, we have a town bylaw that's not discriminating against any particular class, but it does say that more than a certain number of non-related people can occupy a single-family structure. And obviously, this structure doesn't meet that requirement. It's not obvious to me how those two things conflict unless the position is that because of the Fair Housing Act, we're not allowed to have any limitation on the number of people that are living in a house. And that seems like an absurd result.
Yeah. If I'm through the chair. On that issue, I would expect it would turn on, is there a reasonable accommodation? Now, for reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act for persons with disability, the applicant has to ask for it. And then we would have to analyze it to say, are they entitled to a reasonable accommodation relative to our limitation on the number of unrelated persons to live in the house? So yeah, no, I don't wear a black robe to make that decision, so I'm glad you asked the question. But I think that's how that would play out. If we impose it, if they adhere to it, that would be the end of it. If they ask for an accommodation, we have to analyze it under that review criteria of the Fair Housing Act.
Madam Chair, I wonder if the planning department could remind me, how many non-related people are allowed to live in a single-family structure?
How do you --
Five. And this project calls for how many people again?
14.
14. Okay. So significantly more.
Question to Ms. Shan. When someone's applying for a building permit, what sort of questions are you asking with regard to the occupants? Do you generally ask how many people will be living in the house? I mean?
So when someone is submitting a single-family house permit, that is never asked, what the occupant load is of a single-family house is not asked.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Lisa, go.
I have a question. To town council, I believe. So when a permit for a single-family home is applied for and issued, we're assuming that in this case it's for five unrelated people, under five unrelated people. How would the developer of this structure ask for a change to that occupancy to be within reasonable accommodation? What would they do when they -- so let me ask it this way, sorry. The permit is applied for, it's issued, the structure is built, there needs to be an occupancy permit issued.
Right.
When does use come into play? And when is that permit -- when are we made aware that that permit is really for five, more than five unrelated people? People, excuse me. Maybe you could answer that.
Right. So if that is going to be the case, then that is asked for at the time of the application. That is made clear at the application.
So the person making that application needs to ask for a variance or some kind of change or to get an accommodation to that restriction of five people, five unrelated people?
That's right.
Thank you.
At the time of the application for the building permit.
Right. So if we're going back to our zoning bylaw and the definitions that -- because, again, the hierarchy, as our town council explained, so if those two things, federal and state, are not in play, and just our zoning bylaw is applied, then if they're not complying with the zoning bylaw, then the building permit cannot be issued at all, because Chapter 1 of the Building Code says you have to comply with the zoning bylaw with zoning in order to release the permit. So that information would be captured prior to the release of the permit.
Okay. But we assume, when that application is applied for, that all local zoning laws are being followed, and that the single-family structure is for five unrelated people or a single dwelling for related by blood family members?
That's true.
Okay. Thank you. I have one more question. If I can find it. Sorry, I was writing a lot. Did you -- Mr. Mulcahy, was your question answered appropriately for -- about the developer of on the application not being listed as a nonprofit entity?
I understood the answer to mean that the Dover Amendment is not in play, because the Dover Amendment relates to use, and we're not at a stage yet where we're talking about use. And so therefore, at this point, it's neither here nor there whether or not for-profit's involved.
And can I just further?
Attorney Madals, can you confirm that?
Yeah, that was -- that's a fair recital of my answer, I think. I'd also like to supplement my prior comment about the limitation on the number of unrelated persons. There may be, I would expect, actually, that there's probably a federal case on point. I haven't looked for it for this, but I will look for it to get that answer to the board.
Okay.
Because I would expect that is a common tripping point, if you will, for these types of proposals throughout the country, that the definition of a family, the limitation on the number of unrelated persons, and accommodation.
Right. And what's a reasonable accommodation? If your limit is five, is it 10? Is it 15? Is it 20? That answer makes a huge difference, I think, to the Board.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Patti?
So can you just repeat? Like, what are you asking about the occupancy? So if somebody is saying that our zoning bylaw is specific to not more than five unrelated people, and somebody is going to ask for more than that. So again, if we're just dealing with our zoning bylaw, not this educational use that has other, you know, other impacts on the permit, then it would have to go through a variance process.
Yes.
But we also capture some other uses in the Building Code for that type of thing as well. So...
But it wasn't requested, it wasn't brought before us. So we're left with the building permit being issued with the assumption that it would be for, again, blood-related family members or five unrelated?
So I would say, because the, you know, Attorney Slavin pointed out, that the description of work in the permit application was clear about what this was going to be. So obviously, we don't get this type of use all the time. However, we started a level of review based on first, the Dover Amendment, and then going up to the Fair Housing Act and those two, knowing that those would supersede our zoning bylaw. And when we keep pointing out that this is an educational use, it is a protected population, that the permit moved forward. And then with Attorney's help, then we further reviewed the documents that are now uploaded into the permit application. And that's really how it happened.
I would just like to be clear about something, though. If someone came forward and wanted to build a facility that housed 1,000 people, is our position that the Fair Housing Act would say that it doesn't matter what our zoning bylaws are and that has to be allowed?
So again, so we would also have to, you know, put in there some, you know, sanitary code requirements, and there's also some square footage of Building Code requirements for habitable rooms. So within reason, those things would be applied as well. So that would be very unreasonable.
No, sure. I'm just trying to figure out the parameters on what we think the Fair Housing Act requires.
Attorney Dels?
I mean, to take it to the extreme, yeah, I don't know the answer. I said I didn't know the answer. I thought there might be a case on it.
Right.
I also think it's important to keep in mind, for everyone to keep in mind, when you apply additional scrutiny to a protected applicant, you start to run risk. I don't, I think you asked the question of the building inspector, how often do you ask of an applicant, how many unrelated persons? I don't think we ever ask that of an applicant. To do that now, to suddenly say, we have standards about unrelated persons that we impose because of this particular use, becomes risky. Nonetheless, I do appreciate the, it is a zoning bylaw. So does the Fair Housing Act trump that limitation? Or must the applicant do something to be entitled to an accommodation in light of that?
And I think that's a fair question.
Yeah, I don't know the answer. And, you know, whether it's 1,000 people, whether it's 14. There's an answer out there, I expect. Because as I said, I don't think it's the first time it's been invoked as the limiting, an effort to limit.
Right. Or presumably, no one would have limits in their zoning bylaws for how many people you could have in a home if it trumped to that degree, right? So there must be some weighing balancing that happens in a case, you know, in some decision somewhere.
Right? Well, I wondered if you imposed it on a family, you know? I mean, that's a whole nother, but you know, we have limitations on size of structures, that might be a limitation. You have limitation on the lot size or, well, not, but those are generally...
Right, or sanitary, all these sorts of things. They're reasonable limitations.
Thank you. I just, I'm going to ask the question again. So if I'm going in to get a building permit, you do not ask how many people will be living in the house? That's not part of your questioning of the applicant. Is that correct?
That's not right. On a one- and two-family dwelling, no. That is not required on the application, no.
Okay. I do want to remind the Board that in front of us is an appeal to the decision of the building inspector based on their citing due to traffic, parking, size of structure, and a project not in keeping with the neighborhood. So that's what's in front of us.
Madam Chair, Council would like...
If I may, I'd just like to respond to some of the commentary that's been going back and forth. First and foremost, the Fair Housing Act qualifies a sober home as a single-family residential facility. There's nothing in my own experience and research on this issue that specifically discusses the occupancy issue. And in fact, the towns have, excuse me, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court on the Dover Amendment issue and the U.S. Supreme Court on the Fair Housing Act issue. The heart of the Fair Housing Act is to not deny these persons the ability to live in our town. That's not the issue here. The issue today is that based on the information provided at the time of the application, and just as Ms. Sheehan has said this evening, that the first rule in, or the first chapter in the Building Code is that it has to conform to the zoning bylaws. On this application, it says that a single-family home is going to have 14 occupants. I don't know how we get around that because it doesn't conform. So say the Fair Housing Act doesn't apply, say the Dover Amendment doesn't apply, and we're looking strictly at our zoning bylaws of this town, this in and of itself should never have been issued because of the occupancy issue. It doesn't matter whether it's a group of black individuals, if it's a mixed race, if it's disabled people, if it's all white people trying to live together. A group of 14 people in a single-family home should not have happened in Shrewsbury under this application on its face. The appellant has appealed this decision based on the application that was submitted and the permit that was issued. There's been correspondence regarding the Dover Amendment, but if we're going to argue the Dover Amendment doesn't apply, fine. No one is discriminating against anyone. We're simply suggesting that if this project goes into play, it should be five individuals, not 14, per the laws that are at play. Thank you.
So Attorney McDowell's question for you. What guidance would you give us on putting parameters around the number of applicants or the number of inhabitants in a, I mean, I think we're going around the same question?
I think I'd like to research the issue, see if there's federal case law out there relative to limitations, local limitations on number of unrelated persons living. I have an expectation about that there is an answer out there, and I have an expectation about how that answer would go, but I don't want to speculate for this Board. I'm sorry to say that I don't have the answer.
Oh, that's, yeah. Okay. We're taking comments from the Board. Is Mr. Armenti, any questions, comments?
I guess the only thing I would want to know is, and I guess through the application process, but why wouldn't this have been classified as a boarding house? And would that have made a difference in zoning?
So, right, so again, applying what, applying the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Dover Amendment, it's an educational use. A boarding house is not an educational use, and it does come under some other requirements of the fire prevention regulations by definition. So if we follow, following the definitions, a boarding house, a boarding house is not a single-family house in this, we would not review it in the same way.
Mr. Nesbit?
I do have a question for Council. I believe you stated earlier that until the structure is occupied, there really isn't any way to tell what the occupancy is or what its intended occupancy is. However, looking at the permit itself, it is, under the permit to, it says congregate living facility. Does that verbiage change how we would look at maybe applying the Dover Amendment and the way we would look at this? There's been a lot of talk about it being a single-family home, but on the application or the permit here, it says congregate living facility.
Occupancy 14.
Right. Well, I would say that the applicant supplied statements to support a protected use. But relative to the building permit, as to the structure and the plans, I didn't think there was anything deficient about that. But relative to the protected use, we would need to get evidence that it's leased by a qualified nonprofit educational corporation, which was subsequently provided. I think that was not mentioned, but that is Exhibit 10 of the appellant's, or at least that's how I viewed this supplemental letter, to confirm. And I, by the way, I was one, I had problems with one of the first letters, it wasn't signed. But the second letter dated July 14th confirmed the nonprofit educational corporation as leasing the property. My point was, the structure didn't seem to have any non-compliance for the building permit. And then the use, if there were deficiencies with the use, we would enforce against the use. You can't use it for educational purposes if you're not nonprofit. We'd give a cease and desist on that. But if they establish that that's a use, that's true of an existing home or a new home. If it gets leased to a nonprofit educational corporation in any zoning district, it's protected under the Dover Amendment. And if it's a group of persons seeking sobriety in treatment, it's protected under the Fair Housing Act as amended, as a use.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think the piece that I'm sort of stuck on, and we've talked about it already, is that, you know, no one had to ask how many people were going to be living there because it was stated on the application. And we do have this zoning bylaw that states that a certain number of unrelated people can live in a single-family home. I would be interested to know how the Fair Housing Act has been interpreted and what's a reasonable accommodation to such a bylaw before I would be interested in voting on the issue.
I agree, Madam Chair. I can't vote to deny or approve this appeal without knowing that.
I think we have to follow the law wherever it takes us, but I think we need to know the law first.
Okay. So we're going to have to continue. I think we have a choice. I think that's the only way we can go with this. Okay. Can I get a motion?
I will read it. Motion, motion to continue to Janet Circle. The appeal of the decision of the building inspector by Michael Hopkins, 100 Lake Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. to Section 7, due to traffic, parking, size of structure, and a project not in keeping with the neighborhood. Motion to continue to the, sorry, August 30th zoning board hearing at 6:30 p.m.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Am I right on? Continue?
Rowan, do we need a decision paper to continue?
No.
I didn't know, I just have the public...
No, okay.
All right.
I was just going to say that, they're all disappointed.
Did the appellant...
No, I mean, it's not you. Of course. It's one of those things.
Patty was questioning about public comment.
And you know what?
Oh, yes. We've already opened it. And it's fine, I think.
Yeah.
But you're right. I mean, that was a good take.
Thank you. Could I ask the group to just step outside so we can continue the rest of the hearings? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next up on the agenda is to hear the appeal of 20 Bruce Avenue. This is in a residence B1. The appellant is Lauren O'Brien. This is for a special permit to Section 4B to construct additions and attach an existing garage to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. Welcome to the O'Brien family. Aren't you glad you came today?
Can you just make sure you get verbal confirmation that they're okay to a four-member board?
Correct. Thank you. This is a four-member board. Are you comfortable with that? You're shaking your head, yes. They are comfortable. Thank you for that. Okay. So if we could hear a little bit about the project that you have in play.
Sure. We are seeking a special permit due to pre-existing non-conformities in our current house. So we are proposing some additions to our house and our garage, and it will be to the back of both structures. And they're similar to the existing conditions in our current, existing additions in our current neighborhood. And the additions that we did design were meant to blend into the neighborhood. We really had our neighbors in mind when we were planning this. So it's going to remain one level. It's going to keep the house relatively small. And we're expanding behind the existing house so that from the street view, you won't really be able to see much of the additions that we are adding. There will be no new nuisance by noise, odor, smoke, vibration, traffic, or unsightliness. And there's no detriment to public good or neighborhood at all. And we plan to use the addition on the garage in the back for storage space in lieu of building a shed.
Fair enough. Thank you. Open it to the Board. Mr. Mulcahy, questions, comments?
No questions for me. It looks like it stays basically within the same setbacks, just goes further back and still within the building envelope, so.
Thank you. Mr. Armenti? Mr. Nesbit?
No comments.
I have no comments as well. Can I get a motion, please, to?
Public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my gosh. I'm very sorry. Okay. Do we have anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? It's a public hearing. If we do, step right up. We're not in Zoom anymore, so I don't have to give the 50 seconds. Looks like nobody's here, so. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to, are we still closing the hearing?
Oh, we have to close the hearing.
Move to close the hearing.
Thank you. Second? All right. Any questions, comments?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve Residence B1, 20 Bruce Ave., special permit, Section 4B, to construct additions and attach an existing garage to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling.
Thank you. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You can't sign that one.
Nope.
Can I borrow your pen, though?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's a good one.
Okay. Next on our agenda. Hear the appeal of 14A Old Faith Road. This is in a Residence B2 District. Alex Isle and Kim Negren are the appellant. This is for a special permit to Section 4B to replace and expand a deck on an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. Step right up. Hi there.
Hi.
If you could get your name and a little bit about the project, that would be great.
Well, they're the owners, Alex.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Negren. My husband, Alex Isley.
I'm Adele. I'm the one that was just helping them do the drawings and whatnot and helped them go through the process of getting to you guys for the special permit. So you have all the plans, and if you needed, I think, do you have like an actual big site plan? So you did see that. So the, they want to enlarge their deck.
I don't think we have that, but...
And if you give it to us, we have to keep it. If we could hold it up.
Is it the...
We have, yeah.
Just printed out.
Yeah. You have a smaller one, I think, but I just figured in case you wanted to see the bigger one. So they, they're gonna, they have an existing deck, they want to enlarge the deck, and they have an existing, if you look on your plan, looking down on it, there is an existing back door and an existing side door. And they're going to extend just the deck coming up from those stairs. So this, can I just come up there because, can I show you?
You can also use the easel if you want to do that. Whichever.
You want us to see it closer?
Well, no.
Step on up. Step on up.
Okay, so anyway.
Poster board next time, Adele.
What?
Poster board.
So, okay, so when you come down the street and you pull into the driveway, okay, this is the house, here's the lake. So right now, they have an exterior door, porch, stairs. And you come up again, stairs, porch, into the house. So we didn't increase any more than what those already were, and they wanted to kind of continue the deck out this way. Right now, this is their existing deck, and they want to come out this way. And then we also included, on the other, on the actual plans, a dormer. They have a dormer on the right side of the house, or, okay. People think if you're on the lake, if you're on the lake, they look at the lake as the front side. So they have an existing dormer on the right side. They want to put a dormer on the left side just to increase their master bathroom and their master closet. Okay, do you want me to leave that?
I'm tired of hitting my head every time I go to the bathroom.
It's a personal problem. I can't help you with that.
Do you want me to leave that here?
No, you can take it. So we have that. Thank you.
It'll all well.
Thank you. Rowan?
Yeah.
Do we have any comments or guidance?
Just to say that interpretation of dormers have changed, and they're no longer interpreted as substantial changes to a non-conforming, excuse me, structure. So, that's why you ended up not putting it in the application, or at least you were advised to.
Yeah, I had talked to Patty a couple times here and there, and it was like, yeah, okay, just show it on the plans. We can do this, do that, so.
Yeah, either way, I think the board should focus on the expansion of the deck, would be my advice.
Great. Thank you. Comments from the board? Lisa?
I guess I have a, I'm fairly certain that the existing stairs would count toward encroaching on the setback. We've lost our, oh, I lost Ms. McAllister.
I can speak to that as well.
It's not the edge of the structure. The stairs are also considered part of the structure. So the plan to just extend the deck really has no bearing on that. That's a good idea, I believe. The, to widen the deck to no more than how far the stairs go out. That's.
Well, I would say means of egress are not included in setback dimensions.
Even the stairs.
You're saying it's attached to the deck? I see what you're saying. Yes. So, yeah, they are attaching. I would say, this is a bit of semantics, but the existing setbacks before the proposed deck, those should be measured from the house because the steps are only a means of egress.
Got it. That's what I wanted to confirm. So they are becoming more non-conforming on both sides. And you can take other questions. Sorry, Madam Chair, while I look at something else. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, I think Ms. Cosette is going the same place maybe that my mind was going. I am not as concerned about the 4.4 feet from the line. Obviously, that's non-conforming, but I think it still allows room for maintenance and all that sort of thing. 1.2 feet is very, very close to the line. And so to the extent that that's not necessary or could be modified, that would be, I think, my preference. So you're getting so close to the line at that point that you're basically at it with a permanent structure as opposed to something like a fence or something.
Okay. Mr. Armenti, questions, comments?
None from me.
Mr. Nesbit?
No additional comments.
Okay, can I get a motion to close? Well, wait a minute. What am I doing?
Is there any public?
I'm sorry. I'm really sorry. Being that it's a public hearing, is there anyone in attendance that would like to be heard on this matter? Neighbors, friends?
We appreciate a swift approval of our request. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, so far, two of us have reservations about approving this. So it would be great if we could just talk a little bit more about that and maybe ask you more questions.
Absolutely.
So, our reservations have to do with extending the deck all the way to the two entries on either side. And it's basically because just stairways from those entrance ways and exits are less of a nuisance and things like that to your neighbors than this extending the deck and having it be a part of the existing structure all the way along the house. So have you considered not extending the deck all the way to those two exits? And entrances.
We have.
Points of egress.
We have.
Can you talk a little bit more, this is a special permit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Would it still be considered a nuisance if it's behind a fence to our neighbors? Because it's behind a fence. Yeah, really.
It's irrelevant.
Yeah.
What is?
If you had a fence.
Whether there's a fence or not, it's the, it's the structure of the house itself and how permanent things are to that structure, so.
We would hope very.
A deck now is considered a permanent addition to our structures. In the past, they weren't. So I'm just wanting to hear your thoughts on if the deck didn't extend to those points of egress. What would that mean to you?
We would be very sad.
And one of the main reasons why we have the extended deck on that side of the house is because that, the stairway that is going down currently, that would be feeding onto the deck, is off of the exit door from our kitchen. So that allows us access to the deck from the kitchen, which is why we wanted to wrap that around.
And it's less of a possibility that her mother might slip or fall going the other way.
Yeah. Thank you. So safety is a concern?
To clarify, so it's the, the door, the door that it, like I said, I'm less worried about. It looks like it's the south side where there's still, you know, four and a half feet or so. It's that north side one.
It's the 1.2.
Yeah, what's the difference between which door is which?
The one where the 1.2?
Yeah.
That, and you kind of follow that towards, and there's the landing and the stairs. That's off their kitchen.
Okay, and the other one is?
Kind of like there, you go in there.
It's off the other side of the house.
So the steps that are being removed, the existing deck and stairs, are to your living room? Is that true?
No, so the stairs, they're just, I mean, you can either go up the stairs closer and the landing, and you go into their great room, or you go past that porch and you go up the stairs to their existing deck.
Yeah, do you, the drawing that we gave you will show you like.
Floor plan?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So the existing main level plans show you that right now there are steps that lead from both sides of the house.
Right.
Right? So what we're trying to do is extend the deck from where those stairs start to this line that we've indicated on the plan. Reason being that we're trying to create as much of a flat space as we can for her family and our, you know, potential family.
So if the, if the north side weren't extended all the way to those stairs, you could still go through that central hall, though, to get to the deck, the great room you called it?
Mm-hmm, sure, yeah, you could because of the existing deck and with the door, the way it is now, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Armenti, you have any questions over there?
The only thing that I wanted to add was the, was it about a month ago? Two months ago, we had the fireman that wanted to do the garage, and that setback was 1.7 feet.
Yeah.
So.
He chounded some buttons, right?
That was a variance. This is a special permit.
Exactly.
Which is, I think, an important distinction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have had something similar like this, so that we have approved. Oh, I can't remember the address now. It was only a couple months ago, but.
But I will say each, each appeal is, it needs to stand on its own. But I'm, I thank you for that explanation about off the kitchen and your more elderly visitors or whoever lives there.
Have to plan for the future.
And having access. So I'm more inclined now to support.
Did I ask you if you had any questions, Mr. Nesbit?
I guess my only question is, is there, is the existing deck remaining? Is that coming off?
No, it needs to be replaced. Yeah, it really needs, I didn't even want to walk on it, so it needs to be replaced.
Okay.
Home inspector gave it a thumbs up, though.
Just looking at the floor plan, it looks like it may be existing and maybe the.
No, it's, yeah, it's existing deck and stairs to be removed on one of the plans that you guys had, but yeah.
Okay. That's another question I have.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, it's a tight lot. We know that. I had a hard time kind of finding it, and then when I found it, I realized how tight it is. So I'm less concerned about this.
I just looked at the floor plan again, sorry.
Okay.
I'm always a fan of two means of egress.
Yes.
Coming from the architecture world, so I'd be inclined to have that second means.
Right.
So, looking at the floor plan, are there two or are there three?
Three what?
Forms of egress. What is?
There are three on that level.
On, yeah.
Yeah, there's doors that go out onto the deck.
Double doors and then on the west side, then the north door and the south door. Okay.
So, okay, sorry, now I have to go back to the plot plan and the 1.2 feet.
Yeah, that's a perfect space for like a weed whacker to get through there and take care of myself.
So, I'm gonna give my opinion now. If this were modified to have the north side of the deck extend no farther than the house and not extend all the way to the kitchen egress, I would be inclined to approve it.
Same.
What's changed your mind?
It's not what's in front of us, though.
The, I totally missed, just looking at the plot plan, that there's an additional point of egress.
Mm-hmm.
And I now see it in the floor plan. And that seems, you know, the, the south side, maybe that was somewhat more inconvenient. But you also have that double door point of egress right through your great room or whatever we're gonna call that. Seems pretty fairly easy to get through from your kitchen.
We have a step down in the kitchen, so it's actually two-floor, it's a two-step floor plan. And the kitchen is on the top floor.
But it's two steps, so.
Right, but you don't have an elderly mother that I'm talking about.
It's not a, it's not a second floor, I guess.
No, I understand, but it's a step up, and that's why we wanted to have the exit out the kitchen so that when you're carrying plates and dishes, having to go from the kitchen into the dining room and then out the back door to the down patio, it just would make it a lot easier to not have to do this.
So I have to weigh that, it could just be me, and everybody else might approve.
It also creates symmetry in the house, too.
I would have to weigh that against your abutters who are now only going to have a foot and two inches, whatever it is, five inches. You, your deck is going to come out to one and a half feet to their property.
Yeah.
So I, I have to weigh that inconvenience slight. I might think it's light, you might think it's more so. I have to weigh that against, you know, not only you, what you need, but the person next to you. So that's where I'm, I'm sitting.
Any other comments from the board?
I'm in the same spot, I think.
Okay, so can I get a motion?
Can I just ask for one second?
Sure.
To talk to them for a second?
Sure.
So you can't, probably can't condition, you don't want to condition on.
I don't think so. Yes, please.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
Certain order or process?
Sure.
Question? Well, it's just not knowing how the vote's gonna go. Okay, knowing what you've stated. Okay, if, if they were to propose, okay, coming straight off the house, can I come up and show you?
I'm pretty sure I know what you're, where you're going, but yes.
Okay.
Do you want this one?
Well, no, I just wouldn't this. And I'm just, again, and I just like I told them, because I don't think they want to come back here again.
Of course.
No offense at all.
Of course not.
Come on.
If, if we can do this.
Yes.
Is that something that you could?
How does that change the?
It's still a special permit.
No, no, but what's the, what are we cutting off? How much?
We still need a certified plot plan, right?
Yeah.
I'll submit that, but just, like I said, just so that they don't have to come back and go through the whole process in the, the special permit again. It's totally up to them. I'm just asking them if they wanted to propose this.
Yes.
Because I think that would be, I don't know how everyone else is gonna vote.
How wide is that existing landing on that side?
It's at least three and a half, four feet.
Okay, so we're looking at close to five, probably five feet off.
At least the same amount that we have on this side.
Okay.
It's currently 6.78 feet on the northerly side. So it would remain that instead of going to 1.5.
1.2.
Where are you getting this?
1.2 feet. Ms., Madam Chair, could I have asked a question of Ms. McAllister?
Yep.
Is the appellant able to modify their application to not change the northerly side setback? And would they be required to submit a modified plot plan? Or would he be able to waive that plot plan?
Or condition on receipt of the plot.
Or condition on the receipt of the plot.
Right, I don't have a super clear answer. I guess because it is becoming less.
Non-conforming?
Less non-conforming, I think generally that's our rule, right? That, that, those decisions can be made at the time of the hearing.
That's for public notice purposes, right?
For public notice purpose, yeah. And I, I don't know, I suppose if you want to get around continuing.
So, that's a good question. So there is an option to continue and have that changed, or we can, can we? I'm sorry?
We can condition it.
You, I believe, I mean, I haven't been here long enough. I don't know. Is that something that we have a precedent of doing that you're?
Aware of?
Aware of. I think that would be a question I would ask, but.
We might be able to get public comment. It's some free legal advice from someone in our.
Okay.
In our audience.
I wonder what you mean.
You can.
So we can.
Hold on, let me pay you first.
You can, no.
No.
Typically, in the past, you've suggested continue to so that you saw the plan.
And then.
That's the issue.
And you approved it.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what you've typically done. I don't think I can recall of a scene you've conditioned something on the fly like.
Okay, so what that means is you wouldn't be able to?
We'd have to continue the hearing until?
A month.
A month.
Yeah, it's August.
You'll have till August 30th. And I think in the interest of time, that might be our best option. I, I'm sorry to say, so.
So here are your options. We can vote now as is, but you know how at least one member feels.
Two.
You're gonna get.
Then we still come back next month, anyway?
We can continue your hearing.
Well, if you vote, do we get to come back next month? Oh, I was just curious. Maybe I could get both outcomes. Okay.
Either way, we have to come back next month, but if they vote and it goes not your way.
Who's gonna vote yes? Who's gonna vote no?
So, so far, yeah, so, so far, the only arguments I've heard were what we've, the two of us have stated. No other members.
I'm not opposed to it.
Have gone there, so. And there's five of you. One, two, three, four.
You need four.
I need four.
You need four, yeah.
Am I gonna get four?
All right. I think we need to continue this.
All right.
Can I get a motion to continue?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So just so I understand, I just want to be actionable. So coming out of this hearing, if we're going to continue, then if we know that we are going to have three out of five, we would have to alter the plans and have site plans to present? Or would we, would this be? Or would we, would this be, um, so let's explain.
Condition. No, they're not gonna condition it, they're gonna continue it.
Going to continue the hearing, and you would come back next month and show us your altered plans, and then I could have a really good chance of.
Application.
Right, yes.
Is it a form? Three.
Do you want it ahead of time?
Three.
Is it three?
Okay, so they.
Missouri.
Three.
So, so three, so I just wanted to remind you that it's, it's not four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm thinking about.
So, it's like we're at a casino.
Yeah.
It's awful. So, you, you require, and not, you don't always hear, you know, what we're thinking beforehand, but.
Some people like to tell us everything, and other people are a little quieter.
Cause I want to give you a chance to explain.
Like, what do you guys want me to do? This is the Price is Right, and I'm getting, I'm getting everybody's advice here.
Well, let's.
Vote on it, let's find out.
Okay.
What's the worst that can happen?
Can I get a motion?
Then I'll pay to come back next.
Need to close the hearing first. Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
We did take public comment.
Before you guys vote, though, I just want to say this. All we're talking about here, all we're really talking about here, is just expanding a deck. And the reason for it is quite simply for safety across our entire property, across the entire first floor. Yes, there are three exits, yes, you could get out two of them easier than all three, but that's not the point. The point is to provide maximum amount of safety throughout the entire property, so. It's possible that, you know, maybe we've shot a bridge too far here, but we have, we've spoken to our neighbors, and they know we're doing this, and none of them are here to argue about how it's going to impact them.
That's too bad.
So.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Do we have public comments yet? No, thank you. So, being that this is a public hearing, is there anybody out there that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay.
Somebody wanna say yes? Yes, yes? See, there's a yay, we have a yay.
We recruited some votes about a half hour ago, but.
Oh, yeah, you could have.
At this point.
Okay, so, motion to close.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can I use a motion, please?
Um, motion to approve 14A Old Faith Road Special Permit, Section 4B to replace and expand a deck on an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling.
All in favor?
We needed a second, sorry.
Oh, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
There it is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
All opposed?
That's it, there we go.
Aye.
It was three.
Here we go.
It's a three to two, right?
Yep.
So moved.
Yay, democracy!
There you go, see?
We do make some people happy, I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you.
We're good?
Thank you, and I yield back my time.
Yeah. Okay, this is signed.
Yeah, it's a little, this, can you write your bochee? Make a motion.
There you go.
Okay, next up.
Okay.
This is to hear the appeal, 155 Memorial Drive, located in a limited industrial zone. This is Verizon Wireless Care of Sarah, Tara Search, 157 Riverside Drive, Norwell, Mass. This is for a special permit to Section 6, Table 1, to install three antennas and addition equipment, additional equipment at the base of the facility on an existing tower. Hello there, could you please introduce yourself and let us know what we can do for you tonight?
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Timothy Green of Tara Search, representing the Towerona Crown Castle, and the applicant Verizon Wireless. Verizon's existing tenant on the tower is looking to make upgrades to their equipment, which involves adding three additional antennas at the 149-foot level on the existing mon pole. Verizon's been a tenant there for years, it's a multi-carrier pole with two other tenants as part of nationwide network upgrades, constantly changing the equipment to keep up with technology. And Verizon's looking to, again, add three antennas. They would go on the existing platform, platform's designed for anywhere 12 to 15 antennas. I'm sure there's been 12 up there at one point, now there's six, now it goes back to nine, and someday will come back and ask for 12.
Okay. Can we get some comments from the board?
I would just like to know if my Verizon signal will be improved, I'm in a deson, and it's really getting on my nerves, but I've.
I'd probably say it's gonna probably stay the same, but the, where you do have service will be a lot better.
Okay, so I'm gonna stay the same, but I have no, um, comments or issues with this. You're at six antenna now, you're adding three.
It's gonna look the same.
Yeah.
Peter, questions, comments?
No comments, all set.
Okay, Mr. Armenti, questions, comments?
No comments, Madam Chair.
Mr. Nisbet.
How much additional height?
No additional height.
No additional height, okay. Thank you.
I have no questions or comments. Uh, being that this is a public hearing, is there anyone out there that wishes to be heard on this matter? Not? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve 155 Memorial Drive, Verizon Wireless Care of Tara Search, 157 Riverside Drive, Norwell, special, for a special permit, Section 6, Table 1, to install three antenna and additional equipment at the base of the facility on an existing tower.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of 27A Grace Ave, located in Residence B2. The applicant is Adam Khan, this is for a special permit to Section 4B to construct a deck on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question before moving forward?
Yes.
Um, having known, knowing the neighbors' property, do I need to excuse myself?
Knowing.
Knowing, I, I know them well.
And you don't work for them, or?
I do not work for them, no investments tied up in them, no. I just want to make sure of them.
I think that's, and you're not an abutter?
I am not an abutter.
No problem.
I think we're good.
Oh, you're on table?
There we go.
Oh, nice.
Let's introduce ourselves and tell us what we are here for this evening. Oh, what am I doing, sorry?
Sure, um, after hearing all these things, I got scared a little bit, to be honest with you, and it just reminded me of my divorce when I went through. So like, oh no, and that was like a five years of battle. And I was like, I'm, I'm still scared with that now.
Sorry to bring that back for you.
Yeah, sorry.
ETSD is a real thing in that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we'll be kind.
My name is Adam Khan, and, um, I've been, I bought this house in 2010. So, uh, one other specialty of this house is, this house was bought by Jay Hest, who was the chief of Shrewsbury Police Station. So, um, so I bought, I bought it like, uh, one person after that. Coming to the project, uh, before going to the project, uh, I have a small daughter, uh, she is seven years old, and I have a friend here, Arvind Batra, and her daughter, Samara. So they just here to support me.
You just brought her because she's cute.
So I can get some bonus points.
As long as she got candies.
There we go, we can give her that.
Uh, coming to the project, uh, so again, uh, before going to the project, uh, so this is like, uh, it's a two, uh, two-unit condo. Uh, it's a, like a special house, uh, in, uh, in the neighborhood. Uh, and, uh, uh, this is 27A, Unit A, which has got like a three-bedroom and, uh, one bath. It has got a living room and, and the kitchen and a dining room. Coming to the project, uh, I'm planning on adding like a 10 by 16, uh, feet, uh, deck on the north side of the house. So, so the, uh, the reason that we applied for a special permit, um, was requested by, uh, Rowan, Ms. Rowan. And, uh, uh, one of the reasons was like the setback of this house from the, from the front is like 9.9 feet by 9 inches. Uh, but whereas, if you look at the, the plot shape, it's like a piece of pie. And, uh, it has been sliced, sliced, sliced into two, two pieces. Uh, who is my next-door neighbor, uh, she, her name is Catherine. Uh, she owns, I think, uh, uh, plot number 191, ours is 192 and 193. Uh, and since it is a, a shape of pie, like a triangular shape, uh, so, uh, and, so we have like a 10 feet of gap from the, from the setback until the beginning. And, uh, uh, once we are done, uh, once we build this deck, the setback, uh, from the deck, uh, the edge of the deck to the, to the next plot will be like, uh, somewhere between like two feet. Uh, on the one end, on the other end, it'll be like four feet. So I have included like, uh, like a plot plan. Uh, I did some drawing, if you guys don't mind, I can show to you guys.
Uh, we have them in front of us here.
We have them, I think.
Which drawing?
Oh, this is just like a.
I do have all the material.
This one was just like more extra preparation. So, uh, this is just like a hand drawing, which has got the floor plan, the deck, and then like, uh, some.
I can pass it down, I suppose? Still floor plan that we didn't receive.
Makes me dizzy, it's like from the top down. Okay, I see. There, sure.
So I have also discussed this plan with my neighbor, Catherine, and also, uh, the next-door neighbor. They're fine, they, uh, they don't have any objection, and we have like a very good neighborhood, and as I see that, we don't have any fences, like, all the kids from my neighborhood, they're in my yard, and, and they're all in, uh, pool of cats is, uh, uh, in our, in our house. So, like, we have like a one big family there, and, um, uh, as I see, uh, uh, this house, uh, on the right-hand side, uh, sorry, on the, what do you call it, southeast side, I have like a, a big driveway, where we cannot add any deck there, it's a driveway. And behind, I have my next-door neighbor, which is a Unit B, and in the front, I have like a main road. Uh, I think from the, uh, from the front of the, uh, like, what do you call, um, setback from the front, it's like 22 feet by, uh, four inches. So we cannot add the deck there. Initially, I was thinking to add that, but when I was reading the law, it was not convenient. Uh, this is the only one place that we can set the deck, and this is gonna be, uh, really helpful for us. Uh, I got married like last year, so, but my wife is still in India, waiting for a visa. I'm sorry if I'm going through like all those things.
No, we like to hear people's stories, come on, it's all important.
So we're just waiting for her to come here, and then we are planning to expand our, uh, family. So I've been here for 10 years, and, uh, I'm planning to stay, uh, more in this house, and also accommodate my family, make, and also have like, uh, uh, good social gathering with the neighbors.
Okay. Um, board members.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes, sir.
May I just add one thing?
Sure, absolutely.
Might be helpful for the board to know is, um, there is a waiver request for a not certi-, un-certified plot plan. Um, and I've actually discussed this with Patty Sheehan, who is pretty adamant that she would like to see a certified plot plan, um, in the process of approving the building permit, and the applicant is aware of that, and we've discussed that. I know, Lisa, that kind of speaks to some concerns that you have, and, you know, I know that's sort of a trend we can figure out, but just so you're aware.
Okay.
A certified plot plan will happen at some point, but not for our decision.
Well.
If we.
Up to you.
So we don't necessarily, what you're saying is we don't need that to make a decision tonight, but that he'll have to have one.
I would, as far as I know, at this point Patty is intending to require one. I think that was our concern among the department, how, how close the setback was, so I would just, uh, you know, just, so the board is aware that that conversation is being held by staff as well.
I see, okay. All right. Ms. Cosette?
So, um, as you might have alluded or inferred from the last hearing, it looks like if, when you add this deck, there will only be about two feet.
Yes.
Between the edge of the deck and the property line, so I, and even though your neighbors might think this is a great thing, your neighbors may change.
Okay.
Um, so I, I struggle with things like this, so I just want, I have two questions for you, I think, uh, maybe three. Uh, it's a little unclear what is between 27A and 27B. Did you consider at all placing the deck behind your house, in between 27 and 27B, and why not?
There is the connector, there's a, it's kind of like a porch or the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
It's like a weird shape.
Hmm.
So, uh, I think Jay Hest, when he bought this, he added one more unit for her sister, and they connected these two, two houses. So there's a connector between these two houses, which is like, uh, I think like, uh, uh, six feet apart.
So it's six feet?
No, not six, uh, sorry, I'm just like, uh, I, I don't think it's six feet, I think it's like less than six feet, or four feet we are trying to measure. It's very like, uh, I, I can just, within two steps, I can go into, into my neighbor's house, and they can come in.
Okay.
So it was like an in-law suite or something, they were planning to do that, so, uh, I cannot add a duck.
Okay.
Uh, behind the house.
Okay, so the, the certified plot plan might have helped me see that a little bit better. It, the how, the houses are actually, in actuality, much closer than what this diagram shows. So that would have helped to have that. The other question I have, the egress to the deck from inside the unit, it's hard for me to see from what you showed here. Can you explain where the, um, points of egress are to your home?
So the, uh, so for my home or to the deck?
All of them, all of it.
Inside your house.
Your home, your home. How do you get out?
Okay, so for egress, I think there, there are two entrances, one is in the front, if you look at the plan, there's an entrance there, so that's one.
Yeah.
So we got like, I think, uh, we have got three steps, I think it's like a three feet, so which is an entrance which goes into the living room.
Yep.
And then there's one in the kitchen that goes to the, like, to the, what do you call, um, to the bridge, uh, uh, like towards my neighbor's house.
Okay, so it's in the back of the property, um, where that little connector.
Yes.
Is, okay.
It opens in the connector, yeah.
Okay, and, uh, did you also consider, or I'll save, you might have that question, I'll save my.
Peter?
Comments.
Yeah, so, similar to, uh, Ms. Cosette, I'm thinking along the same lines as the last hearing where we had this issue. It looks like you planned to make some sort of sliding door or something like that here, goes out onto the deck. I just note that, you know, with the sort of steep angle of the property line here, even if you shorten the deck a little bit, you'd be getting closer to three or four feet clearance with the line, and I know that seems to be where the board's more comfortable, as opposed to closer to one to two feet.
So, uh, I mean, again, this is just my drawing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, to my best knowledge. Uh, and again, uh, here is, I mean, there is a possibility that I might get like three feet.
Yeah, so, I mean, I wonder if.
So it goes like this.
Right.
And, uh, so from here, I, I'm gonna get like 10 feet.
Mm-hmm.
And since this is not like a straight line, it's like, it goes like a.
Diagonal.
Diagonal.
That's sort of what I mean, it's, it's very tight there, but here, it would be, it'd be a foot longer, just by shortening the deck a little bit. So I wonder if maybe having a, a certified plan would be really helpful in this instance.
Yes.
It's really hard to.
Whereas normally, it might not have as much value.
Yeah.
And try as much as you can to be as far from the property line as possible, but still have the deck you want.
Yeah.
Sure.
Mr. Armenti, questions, comments?
Uh, none from me, Madam Chair.
Mr. Nisbet?
I mirror the same comments that have been made.
Yeah, I think we're all thinking the same thing, so, um, being that this is a public hearing, gonna open it up to anybody out there that would like to comment, I don't think we have anybody out there, so let's, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
I guess, are they okay with continuing, or?
Yeah, if, if I'm understanding the board right, I, we would like to have a plot plan before making a decision. Right, which I don't, my advice would not be to close, I, I guess it would be.
Continue, sorry.
Continue, okay.
Can I get a motion to con- go ahead?
Motion to continue? Want to say that?
So.
Oh, you have a question?
If you don't mind, let's, um, so I have reached out to like a few folks who can provide the certified plan.
Yep, three to four, I saw that in your application. Yep, three to four, I saw that in your application.
What is it?
That there's a three to four months-
It's like two to three month delay on surveyors.
So there is like a huge delay. There is a guy who has said it might take somewhere from four weeks to six weeks, that could be eight weeks.
I don't think you're talking to the right people.
So I spoke to probably like-
Start calling around.
I, I spoke to like 10, 10 companies, and everyone has their own timelines, and they're like so busy.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah.
That sounds-
So just to explain, our struggle is that we can't really see what we're voting on, that's what we're really, that's what we're having a problem on, and if we voted without it, we would be making a determination based on something that we didn't really understand. So I think that our, to speak for the board, I think we're gonna ask that it get continued, and in the meantime, maybe you could talk with people at Town Hall with regard to what exactly we need, and I think that's gonna be your best course of action, honestly, so.
So if and case, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you and take more time here. So who's gonna help me, because I've been asking this question, and I'm reaching out to different people, every person is giving a different answer, so I'm going ahead with the land surveyors, and they are like highly in demand right now, like as, as you know, like from somewhere between like two months or three months. So do you, do we need to do the land survey, or do we just need a plot plan from the, from the town?
Not from the town, yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
Ms. McAllister.
I'm, I mean, the town can't recommend anyone, we, we really can't assist in, in helping, so.
Yeah, thank you, Richard.
I knew that would happen.
We weren't asking for a recommendation on the surveyor, it was what does he need to ask for?
I'm sorry, I see, I see.
This is the difference between asking for a plot plan and-
And a survey, yes.
Survey, I'll take it for it.
Thanks for this recommendation, actually, I called these people, and they, and the same guy, he just gave me the quote today, and then he said like somewhere between like six to eight weeks.
Probably a survey. I would expect, you know, if I can speak-
Certainly.
Member of the public.
It's a public comment.
I mean, when you're doing a house closing, for instance, or a plot plan, you generally get it within a week.
Difference between a survey and a plot plan.
I mean, I'll do my best to get it.
You can ask him to interpose on that what you want, so that's part of the process. We see it all the time, Rowan will tell you that.
We can, we can talk.
Okay, so I'll work with Rowan and-
Great.
So we're going to ask for a motion to continue?
Yes, motion to continue, 27A Grace Avenue, special permit, section 4B, to construct a deck on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on August 30th at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, we will see you next month.
August 30th.
August 30th.
Thank you.
Don't be moving to do anything with this. Okay. Next up, on our 6:30 hearings, we've got an application for 145R, North Quinzigman Ave, this is a multifamily, James and Sharon Richardi, PO Box 777, Boston, Mass. This is for a modification of a special permit to section 4B to construct a roof over an existing deck.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, I'm the board for the record, my name is Richard Ricker, and, and my law offices are 11 Maple Ave, and I'm here representing the applicants, James and Sharon Richardi. This is Sharon Richardi.
Hi.
I figured we'd be, we'd bring the better looking one of the two. This is a request that, to add just about a dormer onto the house. It's, it's a roof over the deck that they had proposed in their initial presentation. Initially, there was not going to be a roof over this deck. You can see it here, and, and this is the view from the lake, okay? So it's on the second level, this is actually the basement level, all right? So it's, it's a roof right here, and it's the roof right here. So it is born out of necessity, the sun bakes that side of the house on the lake in the afternoons, and they realized that as they were building the house. They didn't think that they had a problem putting a roof on, over a deck like this. In fact, when they first inquired at the town level, they were said, they were told it was okay, but then the thought was that they should come back and, and bring it to you. I would remind you that this, this is not an unsightly thing, this is not a nuisance, it doesn't pose any nuisances. If anything, it probably makes the house look even better. We do have with us a letter from one of the neighbors, which I'd like to, if I could approach, give you?
Please.
Yes.
Copies. I think I might have three. As you can see, that's one, one neighbor in the condos to the rear that approves this and, and supports it. We have had discussions with the neighbor that had made a telephone call or two to the planner's office, and we are satisfied, and I believe they're satisfied, we have an email from them telling us that they are satisfied with the design. Basically, we agreed that the Richardis would, would put that standard, traditional type of railing there, instead of, they, they were concerned that we might eventually close this in as, as another room. That's not the intention, they, they don't plan to do that, they don't want to do that. This is clearly a deck that they want to use overlooking the lake, as most people that have houses like this would do. So I would suggest to you respectfully, we also have some photos. This, this photo is looking across-
You're gonna give these to us?
I am, I'm giving them to you.
Aren't we lucky?
These are looking across from the neighbor's house at, at this particular porch that's being built. This is the porch in its present condition.
Richard, can I just be clear, this is the property?
This is, this is the property over here, this is it, beyond this, this is the neighbor at 147, we're looking across.
Okay.
The, the neighbor also has-
Oh, I see it, okay.
-impeded view from that tree as well, as you can see.
Understood, okay.
This is an aerial view, which, which gives you a little more clearer view.
Yep.
Okay? So I would suggest to you respectfully that this being a natural amenity to this special permit that you had already approved, I would ask you to consider this reasonable, in light of the fact that under the Bellalta case, the, obviously, we remember that the standard is that the alteration should not be substantially, and I, and that is in the, in the case law, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I would suggest you do, this is not. This is clearly just an amenity to, to add to what is a vast improvement to the house that was once there. So I'd ask that you approve this, if you have any questions, of course, we'd like to answer them.
Thank you. Lisa?
I think it's a small modification, and I don't think I have any issue with it whatsoever.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, do you mind if I just speak briefly about the history?
Please.
I know Attorney Ricker addressed it a bit, I know that, that the discussion about, you know, whether this should come back was about the plans that were approved by the board not matching what's being built, so that's why it was flagged, of course, there's Bellalta and all these things that would say that, you know, they may not come, have to come back if they were to add at a later date, but that was the concern. There was also some significant correspondence with neighbors, which it's nice to hear that some of it has been resolved, but we did have at least two abutters, and I believe there are some correspondence in the file, I don't know if you'd be willing to share who it was, if the neighbor that you
Yeah.
resolved some things with, I guess, that would be.
The one that was calling.
Yeah.
Baron, the Barons.
Yeah.
They're at 147, which is right next door.
Next door, right.
That, we're looking right across their yard there, in those photos. And they asked us also to put our boat, if we do have a boat, on the opposite side of the dock. Their house looks basically straight out at the lake, they, they're looking straight out, and they've got that big tree to the left of them as they're looking out of their, their house.
That's all I wanted to add, I just wanted to make the board aware of comments to the town.
I frankly wasn't aware, there were other, there was other correspondence.
Everybody see these?
There was only one, at 143, so. We do have some correspondence in our
Yes.
File from them.
Thank you.
But they're not in attendance, so.
Okay. Thank you, Rowan, I appreciate that info. Lisa?
I guess I appreciate the abutters e- email and seeing it, but we made our decision based on a plan that was before us before, and granted it, and I, I don't, the email itself doesn't have any issue with that decision, per se. It's just some other things, and I have no issue with this modification, it's just a roof over the existing deck that we already approved, so I have no ish, no issues.
Can I just, can I just say one thing?
Yes.
If that email is about the parking question, that also, they, they've met with the neighbors and, and they've discussed the, the parking, it was of, it was the trucks from the contractors, they were parking out on the driveway, and it was a constant struggle to get them into the driveway, but I, I think that got resolved.
We, we met with everyone in that condo association, had a really nice meeting, and said, you know, here's our email, here's our cells, if there's any issues, please let us know, we want to be good neighbors, and we had a really nice meeting, and, and we actually discussed the roof, and no one at that point had any issues with it.
And to the neighbors' credit, they also said that, you know, they want to be good neighbors, it was just a temporary issue with, with construction vehicles on the driveway.
Sure.
It's a, it's a tight little spot.
It's tight, yeah, yep. Peter, any questions, comments?
I agree with Attorney Ricker's analysis, I think it's fine.
Okay, Mr. Armenti?
No concerns for me.
Mr. Nesbit?
No concerns as well.
I do not have concerns, and I'd also say it's a lot better than what was there, so thank you for improving. Okay, with that being said, is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay.
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
Thank you, and can I get a motion, please?
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
A motion to approve 145R, North Quinzigman Ave. A modification of a special permit, section 4B, to construct a roof over an existing deck. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Interesting evening.
It has been, hasn't it? They get more fun as the year goes on. Thank you.
Did you get a copy of that?
Yes. Put the pictures in there, is that where they go?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to remind, this is a special permit and a variance.
Yes.
Just to say that, one more time.
Thank you. Thank you, because I need that reminder. Okay, all right. Next on the agenda, is to hear the appeal of 8 Woodway Drive, this is in a resident B1 district, this is for Joe Chavez, 76, Otis Street, Suite 10, Westboro, Mass, this is for a special permit and a variance to section 4B and section 6, 7, I'm sorry, table 2, to construct an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Joe Chavez, I'm a general contractor, owner of JFC Pros Construction, and I have here tonight with me Heather, she's a financial manager of our company, and the clients are Jason and Katie, they're father of two, ages four and six, and as you know, what we all been through with this pandemic, they were working from home a lot, and they saw that they needed more space, more habitable space for, for the children, like a family room, and also, you know, the weather in New England, they're looking to get a two-car garage next to their home. Unfortunately, we do not have the setback that's necessary, but before we even started this project, they have a good relationship with the neighbors, especially the neighbor to the right where the addition is being built. His property is over 30 feet away from where we're trying to build the addition, and they are, they're okay with us building closer to their, the property line, none of the neighbors actually were objected, they, they actually contacted, like, the person on the front, on the side, on, and, and they all have a very good relationship, it's a very nice neighborhood. We even thought about better options, and maybe with the possibility of building it towards the back, but it's impossible too, because you wouldn't be able to make the turn, put the cars there, and also, it wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to access from the back of the house, because you'd have to change the whole layout, I'm trying to save them some money to the way we're gonna build to the right of the house, there's not gonna be that much construction going on inside the existing house, that he's still gonna be able to live there. Very straightforward project, it's not, it's not a bedroom, we're not gonna add any plumbing, we're gonna add mini split heating system, we're not even going to use the existing heating system of the house, so we were hoping to get this approved, to make them life, you know, more comfortable.
Okay. I have a feeling Lisa might have some questions for you.
No, I actually, so, what you're, you're, you want to do this addition, and you're gonna be about four feet, six inches from the property line. I consider garages different than decks, so this is a, you know, you need a garage in New England, so I view this very differently, we'll see if my other members do as well. And you're asking for a standard-sized garage that will allow you to have, you know, both your vehicles, and you did, you explained to my satisfaction, you, that you tried to think about other places for this garage, I can completely understand, putting it toward the back will not give you the radius to turn in, so I'm, I'm fine with it at the moment, thanks.
Peter?
Sure, so, you know, the, the standard for a variance is that there's something unique about the soil shape or topography of the lot, and I, and also the existing structures, and I think you actually have that here. I know the neighborhood well, this is the steepest part of the hill, and the existing house is really all the way over on the lot, so really, the only place you could possibly build is right there, both for topography reasons and because of the existing structures. And you do have four and a half feet clearance, which obviously is, is less than the zoning rules call for, but enough that someone could walk by to maintain that side of the building or something like that. And I, I would also note that I believe other houses in the neighborhood also have garages, single-car garages that are, you know, similarly close to the line, so it's in keeping with the neighborhood also. So I actually don't, I don't have any particular issue with it, I think you checked the boxes.
Thank you. Matt?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
Neither do I.
Okay, and I too, I think in a variance, we have to create, or we have to explain the hardship, and I think that that's been adequately explained. So just to be clear, we are looking for both a variance and a special permit on this.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes. Okay. Ms. McAllister, anything to add, and I'm sorry I didn't get to you first?
That's all right, I was just gonna remind the board that it's a, a non-conforming dwelling, and also requires a variance for that side yard setback, but otherwise.
Okay.
As long as it's just open up to public comment next, and then-
Sure. Public comment, is there anyone out there that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay.
Motion to close.
We can ask each of them individually, there's only three people left.
Okay, motion to close.
Okay, can I get a motion to close, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
Wonderful.
A motion to approve 8 Woodway Drive for a variance and special permit, section 4B and section 7, table 2, to construct an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hopefully this will get done before winter, I hope. You seem to have a good contractor on your hands.
That's the goal.
Good, good, thank you very much, and thanks for your patience. Okay. Last of, I don't know what you guys did to be last.
Oh, you need some public, right?
So when public comment comes up-
You're a board member to sit out there.
You should be happy about that, that's right. Okay, so our next 6:30 hearing, and it's now 8:20, is to hear the appeal of 7 Garfield Okay, so our next 6:30 hearing, and it's now 8:20, um, is to hear the appeal of 7 Garfield Ave, located in the resident B1 district, this is Michael and Elizabeth Morgara. This is for a special permit to section 4B to replace and expand a deck in a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Without further ado.
Without further ado, thank you for your time tonight. Uh, I know you guys have had a long one, so we'll try to make this as brief as possible. Uh, we are requesting a special permit to, um, reconstruct our deck, current deck, and add an, added eight feet onto the deck. The current deck stands at 14 feet, 12, 14 by 12 feet, we'd like to increase it from 14 by 12 to 14 by 20. Um, currently, the, uh, setback is 30, roughly 30.5 feet, which we know is under the 40. Uh, the setback would not change, we would not be, uh, moving the deck any further close to the property line. It would maintain at 14 feet off the house, 30 and a half feet from the back of the property line.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McAllister?
I really have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you.
I couldn't answer any questions.
Ms. Cosette?
We're, uh, there's a request to waive the plot plan, correct? Is that right, or?
Thank you, yeah.
Oh, that's okay.
There is, so they have submitted a waiver request.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they did work pretty hard, they'll see three copies showing, um.
Original, um, existing and then proposed.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
And, uh, with the deck, you'll be, uh, the, it'll be 30 feet from the rear yard setback, correct?
Thirty and a half, correct.
Thirty and a half, okay.
And it's, it's currently 30 and a half, so we wouldn't be expanding it any further to the rear, we would be expanding to the side. And it's very, very much in line with, and all the construction would be behind, and we can't, we also kinda realized during the pandemic that there was a lot of time spent outside, and.
Yes.
We're limited, and, um, we figured it might be nice to have a bigger, when we decided to reconstruct, we decided to add, so.
Okay, great. Mr. Mulcahy?
I don't know why we get these.
I know, Mr. Mulcahy?
Um, I would just say if it's, if it's not going to, um, alter the setback, I am fine with that, and I also don't think I need a certified plot plan for that.
Okay, wonderful, Mr. Armenti?
I'm good, Madam Chair.
Mr. Nesbit?
I would agree with the before-mentioned comments.
Okay, wonderful, and I do too, so, I think we are gonna move this along pretty quickly. This is a public hearing, any public comments, we don't see anyone, so can I get a, uh, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close, and I wish you didn't even have to come this evening.
Lisa had to get that in there.
I'm sorry, but.
Thank you.
Keep saying, maybe it'll happen, okay, great, thank you. Um, can I get a second on the motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, thank you, can I get a motion to, on the waiver for the plot plan?
Motion to waive plot plan for 7 Garfield Ave.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion to approve 7 Garfield Ave special permit, section 4B, to replace and expand a deck on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, thank you, very much, thank you for your patience, we really appreciate it. Okay, and that is the official adjournment of this evening's zoning board of appeals meeting, thank you all for.
Move to adjourn?